Good evening, Camby. Welcome to the September 11th, 2024 City Council Work Session. I'll pre-stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Should I write that down here? Sorry. Well, good evening. Thank you for being here. Hopefully, everybody has taken a moment to reflect on the day as it being 9/11 and day of remembrance of that tragic day. So before we get started, I just wanted to thank Chief Davis and in his other role, not Counselor Davis, but Chief Davis and Camby Fire for their wonderful remembrance ceremony at the Fire Department today. So, thank you, sir. That was pretty amazing. So tonight, we have a work session to discuss the Camby Adult Center building. And so in our work sessions, and thank you all for being here, generally, it's just the council working through some pieces regarding whatever the topic may be. So tonight, with regards to the Adult Center, as we understand, you guys have the fortunate aspect of being able to move into a new building and have that situation come up, which is great. And so then, we just then are really going to talk about tonight what might be some ideas for the city? What are some challenges that we may have or hoops that we need to jump through because of some certain government agreements that are attached to it and whatnot? So, online tonight, we've got Counselor Patton, who is zooming in from home. We have our city attorney, David Doofman, and then Mark, am I saying this right? Saros?
Saroy, yes.
Saroy, yes. Thank you, sir. And so he's here to help with some of the conversation regarding the block grants and what does that look like for the Camby piece? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eileen to kind of tee us up for any other pieces or what we need to do next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were really two different issues that the council asked for some follow-up last time. That was what can the CDBG funds be used for? Or what repayment of the CDBG funds is necessary, if at all? So, again, Mark is here to help navigate through that conversation. There were two different allocations of CDBG funds granted in 1983 and 1994 in the amount of $342,000 and $170,000 respectively. So that's $512,000 collectively. So that amount is roughly equal to the amount that the City Council had allocated in ARPA funding. And it's neither here nor there. There's just, you know, that relationship. So we're here to discuss what the repayment of that CDBG funds might be, if it's required at all. So that's one question. The other question is what the council does want to do with the $500,000 commitment in ARPA that you have made? That amount of money hasn't been paid out yet, so we're still waiting on this discussion. Really, that's it. So in terms of answering the question about the CDBG funds, this assistance might be equivalent of the original grant amounts plus the building value appreciation and documenting how the city helped the CAC move by providing either financial assistance. So the city could allocate that $500,000 to the Camby Adult Center and have made a one-time financial contribution of $500,000. That would satisfy the obligation one way. Another possible way to satisfy the obligation of the original funds is to continue to use the building for some other type of community purpose, whether it's a childcare center, whether it's a community center of some sort. And as long as that use continued of the building, that would satisfy the requirements of the Community Development Block Grant Program. And Mark, please jump in anytime if I'm, you know, if there's anything else to add. If the city wanted to use the building for another CDBG, I covered that. If the city wanted to sell or use the building for another purpose, that would, that change of use would need to be documented. But ideally, the city would financially assist the senior center with the move. So imposing the question of the repayment of the CDBG funds to the city attorney, he indicated that upon initial review, the city's obligation would be to ensure continued operation, that the city's obligation to ensure continued operation may have passed because so much time has passed. So he's available to answer questions as well.
Eileen, I'll just jump right in a little bit, if that's okay?
Yes, please.
Great. So I agree with your city attorney. It's an old agreement that was unclear from 30 years ago, 40 years ago now. So the important thing is for the city to notify the CDBG program that, hey, we're not using this building for that purpose anymore. The second thing would be that the senior center has moved of their own accord voluntarily. And the third thing would be we've assisted them with their move with X, Y, and Z. It doesn't have to be a dollar for dollar. The agreement was written kind of squishy with no end date. So our agreements nowadays are much more term limited, so we acknowledge that. So like I said, we're looking for three things. A notification, which you already have, basically, but in a written letter, like, we're changing the use of the building. The senior center has moved on of their own accord. We're helping them with the move with X, Y, and Z. And that's it in a nutshell. So I'm open to answer any questions.
Just to clarify for everybody here and for myself, in the past, the CVG granted money for the purpose of getting the Adult Center around $512,000. And so the opinion is, if they were to change the use from not, let's pretend like we're not talking about the Camby Adult Center giving it or not, then at that point, your opinion is there would be no obligation to repay those funds? Or would there be an obligation to repay those funds?
Not the total amount, but it would be appropriate for the city to say, we acknowledge this is happening, and we're helping with the move with X, Y, and Z. It doesn't have to be straight cash. It can be something the equivalent of because of the length of time that has passed and the condition of the building that was noted in the staff report. So you'll have to invest money in this building to kind of bring it up to code, so.
Okay, but my question is, is there a legal obligation to repay that or part of it? Or, and I'm not saying that I don't want to. I'm just trying to clarify what the legal obligations are.
Yeah, the legal obligations are really in the form of a CDBG program regulation that say if you're going to change the use, you need to acknowledge that and pay back the funds or something. So that's basically what the home, or I'm sorry, the CDBG program regulations say. And I can send that to your city attorney as well.
Okay.
If I might just jump in, and Mark, thank you. That's helpful. I generally, and I don't know the program nearly as well as you do. I certainly don't purport to be an expert. Some of the research I've done, it suggests that if the city were going to replace a use that was consistent with the objectives of the CDBG program and got HUD to essentially bless that, that there may not be any requirement in that regard.
That's correct. If you wanted to turn that facility into a childcare center for low-income kids, like a Head Start Center, or a teen center for kids at youth at risk, or a workshop for people with disabilities, or those are all CDBG eligible activities. So you're absolutely right. If you change the use, you could still be using it for a CDBG eligible activity.
Perfect. Yeah, I just wanted that piece to be, at least that was my take on the rules, and I appreciate that clarification.
Yeah, you're correct.
Yes, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. So let me understand this right. So if we turned it into a teen center, then we don't have to pay the money back?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That helps me out quite a bit.
Okay, so just to clarify, the issue is if we decided to turn it into an administrative building or something to that effect, then we would have to pay the money back. But if it kept as a use, a community use, then we wouldn't?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to make that clear, what the legal obligations are, so that we could operate under that.
We don't need another administrative building? We have this?
No, I'm just saying, another purpose, or to sell the building, or give it back to the school, or I don't even know, you know.
Back, it's our building, their dirt. That's another complication.
Yeah, that's.
It's the use ultimately for the CDBG purposes, you know. You're absolutely right, the sort of the layers of, you know, the school district owning the underlying land, the city owning the building. You can make it a little more cloudy, but I think ultimately, on that issue of essentially, if that were a route the city wanted to explore, to keep the Counselor Stern's example, if we did something that was just sort of a more traditional municipal use, that probably is not going to qualify. But under the program, there are a number of objectives, is really what they call them. And there may be opportunities there, depending on what the city's needs are, that we could swap one of those for another and potentially be okay as far as the repayment issue goes, doing it that way.
Yep. Yet another example would be an employment training program for people that are out of work or people with disabilities to go there, get some job skills and move on. I don't know if there's an agency nearby that does that, but that's another example of a CDBG eligible use is an employment training program.
Counselor Patton?
I have a couple of quick questions. One is, what is in our lease agreement with the school district? I know for the pool, if we leave the pool, we have to tear the pool down and fill in the hole. What is the stipulation if we were to leave the Adult Center and vacate that building? Does the school just take it over? Do we have to tear it down and remediate the land? What do we know what is involved in that?
Good question.
I will say I don't. I do have a copy of the lease, I believe, so I could take a look at that, but offhand, I do not know.
Yeah, I do not know offhand either.
Okay, the second question I have is that if we were to, so my concern is if we were to give this $500,000 to the Adult Center or some amount of it, the reason we were putting this money into the building was because it needed it. It needed it for seismic updates. It needed it because the kitchen was bad. It needed updates for the Meals on Wheels programs and such. If they, if we then try to get a different group into the building, those same problems still exist. And I don't know where the money would come from if we give the Adult Center money to take to their new facility. And then where does that money come from to make these updates? Even if we give them a few hundred thousand dollars for their move and retain the remainder, it's still not enough to make the updates. I guess something else I would be curious about is really what are all of the updates that were needed to be made? Like, how many more years? I guess this is for future discussion, but I would be curious as to how many more years are left in the building? You know, what its ultimate life expectancy could be with these updates? I mean, if we put $500,000 into it and it's going to last another five years or so, you know, what does that look like?
So I do know that the improvements that were proposed for the building included a seismic upgrade, a new heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system, new windows, and a generator and fire suppression improvements. I don't know what the breakdown is of those improvements are. I don't have that with me. But those were the improvements. I do believe the windows related to the to some building improvements. I don't think that those were absolutely necessary to be improved in the building.
So you said seismic HVAC, new windows. What was the others?
A generator and fire suppression changes.
No kitchen?
That would have been the responsibility of the senior center itself.
Oh.
So all that the city had to do was to make the building improvements. The interior improvements that would be made would have been the responsibility of the senior or the Adult Center was taking responsibility for those improvements because they're tenant improvements as opposed to building improvements, essentially.
Oh, I had that wrong then. Okay.
Yes, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I've had the opportunity to sit in on a number of the, well, all of the board meetings and pay attention to what's going on and was in that discussion on the remodel for the Adult Center. And the ARPA funds are very generous, but was a small amount compared to all the work that was going to be done at that facility. It mainly had to do with the infrastructure type of issues, like the city administrator said. Those are all infrastructure, and they couldn't, the $500,000 or the ARPA funds were not going to even cover all those. You know, the important part as we move forward is the facility that they're moving into has a very similar type of needs, infrastructure needs. Sprinklers, exiting, some work on the heating system, some things like that. They're in the process of getting all that compiled. But if the council so chose to move that money into the other facility, it's going to be doing exactly what we were going to be doing in this facility. And that's why, you know, I think that, and we haven't even determined what we want to do with the old facility at this point. And so we wouldn't know what the need improvements would need to be in the old facility. The only question I have for David Doofman is whether or not the application was filled out specifically for the building that they're in now for the ARPA funding, which I support moving to the other facility. I just want to make sure that legally, we can do that.
So I think just Counselor Davis, to make sure I understand the question. So given the fact that the Adult Center had originally applied and asked for ARPA funding for the existing building, the question is whether now that they're going to be going to a different place, would that change at all the ability for the use of the ARPA funding?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, because of the fact that what they would be using it for would be the same need as in the.
Sure, yeah, just a different location. I'll, you know, confirm this, because I don't know offhand. But my sense is that the fact that they would be operating the center in a different location, you know, wouldn't affect the fact that they, you know, applied for ARPA funding, you know, at the current location. I don't think that's going to affect the outcome for ARPA purposes.
Thank you.
But I will confirm that for you.
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Sterns. I don't know if this is appropriate place to do it, but I think it's a good, we think about this, like kind of what Counselor Patton was talking about. Right now, we have this building that has a use but may soon not have a use anymore. And then if we're going to keep that building, if the city's going to keep that building, then there's going to be costs to keep it serviceable in one way or the other. And so we have, as far as the city goes, a, well, a current liability on that building, the upgraded needing. We have this asset. We have this liability as well. If we transfer the funds to a new location, the liability still stays there about the upgrade of the building to standards if we want to use it. I think it may be premature to say the funds need to go to another organization or another location if we still have, because the need for the funds arose because we have this liability. Liability will not go away by moving the funds to somewhere else. The liability will remain on the city's books. And as stewards of the city's finances, we, I think, obligated to look into and see, is this building going to be of use to the city in the future? If it's not, then maybe we need to make plans to, you know, plow it over and give it back to the school or maybe donate it to the school or something, because if we donated the school, then they would donate the liability of the building improvements with that as well. But I just think we shouldn't be ignorant of the fact that the liability that the building represents is still going to be there even if the funds move or the senior center moves.
Okay. Counselor Davis?
Thank you. Thanks for your comments, David. The, I think the important part to remember here is that the request was from the Adult Center, not the building. It was for the organization of the Camby Adult Center to support a group of seniors and people that use that and are busting at the seams and don't, and that's the need, that's the reason that they had to move. And so the request is still from the Adult Center. And like any other structure on this one, we still have to have probably two to three work sessions just to decide what it is we want to do with that building. So we don't even know what the requirements will be for that building until we have those work sessions.
Correct.
Today, we're dealing with the fact that the ARPA funds have to be committed by the end of this year, at least identified where they're going to, and then spent next year. So we need to make a decision on this sooner than later, not only to meet the obligations for the ARPA funds, but also so the Adult Center has an answer from us.
So just again, want to make sure we stay within the confines of the work session here. Can the funds be used or repaid, which I think we've got our answer for that? That either if we're keeping the building and we do it for certain items, then we don't have to pay anything back on the grant. If we decide to do something like offices or something else, then we're obligated to pay those back. In terms of what we need to do, that's something for tonight as well. There are ideas that we want to put on the table to start having that discussion with. And I think that tonight is a pertinent piece of conversation. And then to your point, yes, we need to determine, obviously, in the work session, we don't make decisions in the work session. It'll be at a council meeting, but still want to get that, these pieces at least out there for conversation. Counselor Sassy, you had something, and I'll come to you, Counselor Patton.
I had a deep question. So we own the building. The key Adult Center rents from us. Why are they in charge, I mean, if this is true, I'd love to have rentals. Why are they in charge of maintaining the building when we own the building?
So the agreement says that the city maintains the building and the senior center provides the services inside of the building.
Okay, so like windows, are they the original windows? Okay, we've been famous for building something and not maintaining it. How old is that building?
Forty years ago, we got the grants.
Why have we not put new windows in? Why have we not stayed on, and we're famous for this, why do we not stay on top of maintenance? And I'm not blaming anybody here, because that was years ago, but we're famous for that. Why have we let this building go so long without doing something to it? That's my question, so.
It's a fair question.
You know, when they say, you know, that was their, I get the inside stuff, but the structure, that building, we own it. We need to take care of it. It's too valuable to sell or knock down. So I would imagine, I would, well, we've had, how many people come to us and say, we need a teen center? There it is. You got a kitchen. You have a dance floor. You have a hall. You have a bookroom. I mean, yep, anyway, that, I just wanted to make that clear, so.
Yeah, it would make a good teen center.
Counselor Patton?
Yeah, so before I get to my original list of questions that I've composed here, first I want to touch on what Counselor Sassy was saying. The fact of the matter is, the city has put work into the building. Back when I was originally on city council, we faced this problem where the building was becoming derelict. And there were HVAC problems, and there were other problems with the building. The outside of the building, I believe, was sheeted with the infamous board that was exploding or whatever. And the council at that time was faced with the challenge of, do we walk away from the building or do we put money into it? And because of these community block grants, the city decided that we needed to put money into the building to update it because we weren't going to be able to just walk away from it and pay back all these block grants. So at that point in time, the, you know, the facade of the building was updated. There was HVAC work done. There was a fair amount of money that was put into updating it. That was back in 2009, between 2009 and 2011. Now, fast forward, now the building needs more updates. I mean, it's what comes of having a building, especially one that was built back in like the 1980s. So that's that. We have, the city has made improvements in the building. It's just time to make more improvements. Some of the questions that I have, based on kind of what we have been talking about here. Oh, one other thing I want to touch on is I can appreciate where Counselor Davis is coming from. But I can tell you that in all of the years that I have been, that I have, back when I was originally on council to now, whenever talk has been done about making investments into that building on behalf of the Camby Adult Center, it's always been about the building. It's not necessarily been about the organization. So I did not consider the $500,000. I never considered the $500,000 being a direct donation to the Adult Center organization. I always assumed that it was money to be invested in updating the building so that it would be more amicable for them to be able to be located in. So that is my perspective on that, whether people like it or not. As far as things I would like to know for the future, as I mentioned, I would like to know what the obligations that we have to the school are for what we do with that building, whether we put somebody else in it, whether we tear it down. Are we able to walk away from it and say, guess what, we don't need it anymore? It's on your land. It's your deal now. You know what that looks like? I would also like to know what the estimate would be to demo the building and remediate the property. If we did something like that, I'd like to know if it would allow us the opportunity to renegotiate the lease with the school because we would be leasing less land, and could we get some sort of reduction in the cost of leasing that property for what would remain, which would be the pool? I would also like to see if there are any other organizations out there that would be able to move into this building, whether it's a teen group or the YMCA or like a path-to-work program or some other group like that. What are they, are they out there? Are they looking for a building to see if there's actually somebody out there that could move into this building once it is vacated? So those are some of the questions I have for the next time we have this chat.
I'm sorry, Jason, can you say that last point again that you were wanting information about?
If there's any other organizations interested in moving into it.
Yeah, like some sort of like. Yeah, like some sort of like, some other organization, whether it's a Head Start organization, or, you know, whether it's a teen center, some other group, because we obviously, at least from what I can tell of our, you know, financial situation, we would probably cannot hire in staff to run a teen center out there, or run a Head Start program. Liability-wise, I don't think the city would want to be in the business of being a daycare center, even though it's desperately needed in the community. Actually, I would really love to see that, but that would be a huge expense. But yeah, some other group like that that would be able to move into the building and occupy it and fill one of these needs. And then if that's the case, what would we need to send along with the Adult Center to put towards funding their new building to satisfy? Because I'm not heartless, right? I might be a pain in the butt, but I'm not heartless. I would like to see some money go to the Adult Center to help with their work over there at the old Methodist Church. I used to go to that church, it's a beautiful building, the last thing I would want to do is see it destroyed, you know, because it can't, doesn't have anybody in it. But obviously, if we need to make updates to this facility, we have to be able to thread this needle and essentially split this coin into multiple pieces in order to be able to do all of the stuff.
Thank you, Jason.
Counsel Davis?
Thank you. And Jason, I appreciate your comments, I don't agree with them, like normal. But, you know, the, the fact that the Adult Center is being used by the adults of the Canby community, and they've outgrown the Adult Center, and they are moving to a facility that will fit them, I still feel that the money does go with them to the other facility because they're doing exactly what they were going to be doing before. So I'm in full support of the ARPA funds going to the Adult Center for the, as long as it's being used for the infrastructure, and as long as our attorney says that it's legal to do that. And I will be proposing that motion at the next meeting as well. The, the second part of that is just the fact that future use, I don't know why we have to look into, are we going to tear it down? I mean, you're creating a lot of staff work on asking all these questions. I think, I see us using that for our teens and our youth within our community. I would like to see it being used as a teen center for the youth. We've had a lot of input from citizens, I've heard that. We've been looking at the Ackerman complex, possibly using the Ackerman complex, which we don't have at least a chance to do that right now, we're working on that with the school district. So we desperately need something. Now, as far as who runs the teen center, that's one area I agree with, is that we shouldn't be in that business, very similar to Sherwood. Sherwood has the YMCA running that facility over there. And the YMCA potentially, that's a good research one for us to look at, whether or not the YMCA would be interested in coming over and running the teen center. We're still a year and a half away from the Adult Center even potentially moving out of that facility, so we have a lot of time to work on that. But I feel that we owe them an answer on these ARPA funds, and we owe it to the support of our seniors in our community. We, a number of communities, actually cities, put money into the adult centers. We do not. They are self-sufficient, other than county funding, state funding, but the city does not pay any money to the Adult Center at this point, other than the funding that they secure from the county and the state. So we're very fortunate to have an outstanding Adult Center, which is busting at the seams at this point, so that they found a facility that they can move into that will meet the needs of our community.
Counsel Patton, you have something else?
Yeah, I have a follow-up to that. Um, it does not surprise me that you do not agree with me on all of these things, but the fact that you think that my questions are a waste of time of city staff is a bit offensive. If we're going to look for a teen, if we're going to decide that this building is going to be used for a teen center, are we just going to expect the group that's going to rent this building to just fall from the sky? There needs to be some sort of research done into it. If we exhaust all options for finding somebody and cannot find somebody for that building, the next, the next option is the building will be vacant, and it would ultimately need to be torn down. So I think that these are all things that we need to look at for the future. Regarding giving them, just approving to give all the money to the Adult Center, that's fine, but I would hope that those people who vote for that right away also have some sort of plan on where the money's going to come from, whether it's the reserve or some other group to fund the updates to that building, which will be needed, which will need to be made in order for a teen center to go in there. And then finally, I find it interesting that you bring up the fact that the Adult Center does not get any money from the city to do their operations, yet they are a huge impact, they have a huge impact and are a huge benefit to the city. Well, so is the library. I mean, we don't give money to the library, we have to, they have to borrow funds from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund to get them through until their tax money comes in. You know, we provide them with a building, they, we maintain that building, but they are responsible for all other costs involved in that building. If a bookcase breaks, they have to pay for it, out of that tax funds. So if there is an interest in giving money to the Adult Center group, then I am curious as to why there's not also an interest in giving money to the library for similar services.
Counsel Davis?
No?
No?
Okay.
We can go on all night.
I know we could. Counsel Sterns?
So the American Rescue Plan money that was given, a grant that was given, is that to the city itself, or was that to the Adult Center?
It was to the city.
To the city. And so, as a city, I'm just throwing a wild hypothetical, we won't do, but if we wanted just to all spend it on a park, we could do that? Or is it, are there other restrictions on the, on the ARPA funds besides just, I'm seeing if there are other restrictions on that fund, or is it, can we just throw it into a police officer? I mean, I'm just, I'm just wondering what the restrictions are on that fund as a practical matter.
There are certain restrictions on the funds.
What restrictions are those on those funds?
They have to be used for infrastructure. I know they have to be used on, or I'd need to do some research to, to recall all of the uses.
Because if the infrastructure is a restriction, but it doesn't have to be infrastructure, I guess, on city property, it could be on private property, I guess, because that's what we're proposing at this point, right?
Well, the infrastructure category of fun, of availability for ARPA, you know, it's typically water, sewer types of projects, it doesn't relate to this building, but I didn't think that was your question. What can ARPA funds be used for? That, I just have to go back and research.
But then, but if that's not what we're going to do, then, then what is the restrictions on what the ARPA funds can be used for?
I'll have to, I'll have to dig into that again.
And then another question is, whether giving it essentially to a private party is in line with what the ARPA funds are, the restrictions on that particular grant. Now, if it's allowed, then I guess that's, that's something or other, but I always like to see what's the spirit of the grant, and are we fulfilling the spirit of the grant? Because I, and maybe I'm just being confused a little bit, because I didn't get on council until after, because probably lots more discussions were taking place before I was here. But the idea, the grant of money was given for a particular purpose and can be used for certain purposes, I guess, I mean, it could all give it to me, I suppose, but, but I don't think that's part of the, the spirit of the grant.
I don't think you're infrastructure.
Well, I got infrastructure, I got a house. But the, but the point is, is that, is I'm wondering, what are the allowable things to do, is this allowable according to the ARPA restrictions?
Go ahead.
It, it would be allowable, because we've given money to the fairgrounds to put into the infrastructure that will be their building for emergency purposes, and we agreed to give money to the Canby Utility Board in order to make updates to fire hydrants and to the li, the water lines out in the industrial park, so.
So the Canby Utility Board is a government entity, and unless I'm wrong, isn't the fairgrounds owned by the county? They're all government, public properties that, that, that we're supporting? I mean, unless I'm mistaken.
Well, and the council had, had decided to give an amount to certain community uses, and you're right, most of them are government-related as well. I think the, you know, the justification for giving money to the Canby Adult Center lies in part because that organization is providing for senior activities for the organ, for the community. And so that's a justifiable use.
So you think that that's a legal, justifiable use of it? Because I'm sort of, in my sort of weird legalistic mind, see that as maybe some type of private, private enourment, because it's going to something that's non-government, which, I'm not saying this will happen, I, but in my office, we're always going over these hypotheticals with my clients and stuff, so just to get my background, they could, if they wanted to, just go sell it to the person next door right afterwards, and boom, public money just became into private hands, if, if we're basically saying, you go, money, do what you want with it, and no restrictions on it, and you could sell the, the facility the next day to, and maybe I'm wrong, if that's not an option, then that's not an option, but, but are we relying on their goodwill or intention? Are we letting public funds go outside of public funds and be potentially used to, you know? I don't know if you understand my, the point I'm getting, but, but is that a possibility?
David?
Yeah, I can, I can weigh in a little bit here. Yeah, thanks, thanks, Mayor. So first I'll say, I'm sorry if you hear a lot of rain falling right now, or if you hear something in the background, that's my roof. It is broader than just infrastructure. One of the things that was challenging with ARPA was the uses that cities and counties could make of the money was somewhat fluid. Over time, the Treasury Department, you know, sort of refined what they believed we could use the money for. It's admittedly been a couple of years now since I've even looked at it, so we will go back and double-check. I think it's, given that, you know, infrastructure certainly was at the beginning the main thrust, broadband was another big thing. But then it started getting, you know, from the Treasury's perspective, sort of a broader authority to use the money for other types of, let's just call it, services that government might otherwise provide. So I don't think the fact that it's going to a private party like the Canby Center is necessarily an issue, but we will, we will obviously confirm that for you. The other thing about use of the funds, if the money were given to a private party, we will have an agreement as we would with, with giving money for any kind of grant, not recommendation, you have an agreement with the Canby Adult Center that would say, you've, you know, we're giving this to you on the premise that you're using it for these purposes, to the extent you turned around and sold the building or did something else, you owe that money back. So there's ways to, to deal with that issue as well.
There's one other aspect that, that the point of appropriation of the funds goes to the city. Once the city passes the funding on, it doesn't matter to the federal government. So they have, they have allocated to the city, and that's the, the level of appropriation that they care about. So they don't really follow the funds once the city has decided what it's going to do with the funds. If the city made an appropriation to the senior center for, because the senior center is providing this, for the senior services of the community, and the city made that decision, that's, that's the, the point that the federal government stops tracking the money. It doesn't go down and see what the senior center or the adult center spent that money for.
Okay. But, but as I think David was saying, if we were to give them money, there would be some restrictions on there requiring that the, that, that, in essence, if they were to turn, I mean, turn around the next day and sell it to somebody else. I'm not saying they would, but like I say, we, I have those conversations anytime someone wants to come to my office, invest in real estate, have that conversation.
That, that flow of funds is not going to be tracked by the federal government.
Federal government, but we could do that.
But we could.
Because like I say, I, I, as a sort of steward of the people's money, I want to make sure that, that, that the intended purpose, as best as we can, is preserved.
Yeah, and, and we haven't yet, I mean, that, that conversation.
But $500,000 is a lot of money, you know?
It is a lot of money, but I, we haven't required that of the fairgrounds, the money that we're giving the fairgrounds, or the money that we've given the fire district or Canby Utility Boards either, so, so I would be careful to make a requirement on one party that we haven't made of the other parties as well.
Yeah, but the difference in this case, at least in my, the way I look at it, is that with the fire department, with the fairgrounds, it's still, I mean, it's a different public entity, but it's still a public government organization, and that's my, and that's what for me is, is the thing in my mind that's holy enough, is why does one org, and, and not any kind of judgment on the, but it's, it's the whole principle of the matter, is why is one nonprofit getting money and not another nonprofit? And whereas another nonprofit could be argued to be just as worthy as, as the other, I deal, I do tax returns and stuff for lots of nonprofits, and we're always, and, and I think we need to have a justification, if we're going to say, here is a bunch of money, do with it whatever you need, without restrictions, we know that you're going to do a good job on it, but, you know, I know nonprofit boards change and things like that, and, and I tell you of all the scandals that come across, so it's not, it's, it's not just 100% hypothetical. So that is my concern, is we're saying, this is, this is the people's money taken by the people's taxes, maybe not from Canby, but maybe from Detroit or wherever they got the money for the ARPA funds, but it's still, I still have, feel that there's a, there's a obligation on our part to make, to make sure the funds are, are, as best we can, used for government purposes. And, and I think, you know, the, the Adult Center is a good cause, I think they do good things, but it's just the principle of the matter, how do we say that this is, this is money for the government and we're going to throw it, or give it to a non-government entity without any type of restrictions? Because real estate can be sold really easily, developed really easily, currently there's a church that's now an apartment building in, you know, in, in Canby, and I think that's a worthy cause and everything, but, and I tell this to all my clients, real estate is not the, the, the activity, the activity is home is at the real estate, but it's not the activity.
Well, you raise a couple of, a couple of thoughts come to mind, you know, that, again, the, the money has been given to the Canby Adult Center because the improved, because it was housed in the building that was funded with CDPG improvements. Now they're kind of stepping outside of that protective, I don't know that that's the right word for it or not, but they're, they're stepping outside of that protective environment by virtue of moving into a different building. But they're still providing senior services for the Canby community, so that has to be taken into consideration as well.
Well, I mean, I guess we could talk a lot more about it, but I am just kind of sharing the, the thoughts in my mind as sort of a custodian of the, of the public funds, is that I know that, like I say, a church can be turned into an apartment building, we see it here in Canby, we know that, that a, the building itself is, is separate from the activity that goes on, and right before we, as the city, we're providing the organization with the public building to do this, we will still have that building to do something else with, and we'll still have needs for that building after this fund's done, and so I, you know, that's, I guess that's, I'm one person on the council, but I I, you know, that's, I guess that's, I'm one person on the council, but I just, those are my concerns.
Well, and I think ultimately this con- you know, this work session is about identifying what are the next questions to ask as we keep trying to figure out. And we, you know, we're noodling our way through this. So what is the next step of, the next set of questions to answer? So the conversation tonight, for me, has been very good and very robust. So.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
And I apologize, I'm not accusing you guys of doing any of the things I'm proposing. It's just. In my work, line of work, it's hypothetical, goes everywhere on those kind of things. So we have to always keep. Just, it's just hypotheticals.
Counselor Sassy?
Another question to throw on your list. Say we never got ARPA funds. Are we budgeting enough money to, for this building to put money into this building every year?
Thank you. I don't remember.
Are we doing a good enough job with that? That's another question. So.
I, I don't know. We don't have an identified amount of money.
Okay.
For maintenance at that building. We don't.
Okay. Well, maybe we should.
Yeah.
We own it.
Yeah, I mean, I like that, um, whole lot of spare, um, metal that's on fourth and fur, but, uh. It's always nice to have.
You're still on that water tank, aren't you?
Well, no, it's, it's the concept, the idea of having. Uh, something that's a cit- public asset that's doing nothing, you know, that's my, that's what bugs me. And that's a different issue right now.
Yeah, let me, let me add to my answer in that if there is a need for maintaining the building. I mean, Public Works in Dustin have been to that building many times. And so, you know, they're not, we're not ignoring. The, the needs of the, of the senior center either. It's just that this amount of money is, you know, is. Or these amount of improvements that are needed are, you know, substantial. Um, and can be kind of separately quantifiable. But if there is something that doesn't work out there, we are attending to that. As far as I know.
Okay, so the purpose tonight was. Um, one determining, and again, I'm sorry, I always want to say CBGB, but that's a rock club in New York City.
CDBG.
CDB, so I wrote down CDGB, so. Okay, um, I think we've answered that question.
Is that correct?
On what we can use. Um, if it's used or repaid, all that, we've got that figured out. Um. The number one item I think that I heard this evening that we need to have a conversation about is the ARPA fund allocation to the Cambi Adult Center. And so within that, I, I've written down that, so questions are things that we need from staff. So please. If I'm leaving anything off, let me know. So, um, do ARPA funds, um, follow the building or the organization specifically? Um, what's been the maintenance history for the Cambi Adult Center? So what is that capital improvement? Project list that's occurred? And we just said windows and whatnot, but prior to that, what's that history? I don't want to know about us having to go in and patch holes in walls and things like that, but what are those big capital improvement pieces? And then, uh, ARPA uses and restrictions. Are the, the things within the ARPA conversation that we need to get answers? Am I leaving anything out that we talked about? Yes, Counselor Davis?
Yes, just the, one other question would be following up with maybe the Sherwood, uh, YMCA and find out how. Uh, because that is a city building and they're running that facility, um, so that we have some idea of what that looks like.
And thank you. That segues into my next point. My next point that I think we were talking about tonight that we needed staff to work on is what do we? Um, what do we, what do we continue to use the building for? So in that, under that arena, looking at what's the cost breakdown of the building updates that we. Were gonna do already. Do we have a dollar figure on what those were gonna cost? Um, the cost of scraping the building and, uh. Mitigation of the, of that property if need be, or if it came to that, I think we should have a dollar amount to that, or at least that's what's being, I'm here being asked. Um, what's our obligations to the school district for that building and property? Um, and then in terms of organizations that could move in there. Um, you know, we talk about YMCA, Head Start, Teen Center. What are those? That might be a bigger, obviously research piece that may need to be done to find out what those organizations are. Um, that, again, is that an RFP process down the road? Is that, what does that look? So. That to me plays into the, we've got a year and a half on that end. The pressing piece is the answer regarding the ARPA fund and what this council wants to do regarding that. So I, I think my question of you, Eileen, for you and your team, based on the items that are ARPA specific. I think obviously next week might not be possible to have that. Ready to go for a conversation on the agenda, or would it?
Um, I, I'll see what I can do and report back under my city administrator report.
Okay, so next, so next week we have a city council meeting.
Right.
So you give us an update on whether we're gonna be able to do that. At one of the meetings in October, we will do this.
Yes.
Okay.
We could do that.
Does that satisfy the council in terms of, we'll get that ARPA conversation laid out, decided on so that. We know, Cambi Adult Center knows, does that satisfactory to the? Okay, so we should have an answer regarding the ARPA aspect here by the end of October.
It's definitely by the end of October.
Have we left anything out of the conversation this evening regarding this topic? Counselor Patton, we leave anything out? You're not here, so I can't see your head shake.
No, no, I think that covers it all, although I would. You know, I have my fingers and toes crossed that in the conversation with the school, it might spur them on to just letting us buy the whole property. You know, there's always, I can, I, there's a whole thing about wishing in one hand and doing something else on the other. So I'm always willing to give it a try.
Well, my dad always said, if you're afraid to hear, no, don't ask. So we keep asking. So, uh, Mr. Doofman, anything on your end that we missed or what questions do we, do we need to ask that we didn't ask?
Uh, no, I think, Mayor, you, you got, um, what I had down with one exception, and maybe it's just a twist on, on, on something that you pointed out. Um, but Counselor Patton had asked also just in terms of. What happens if, um, if we, you know, no longer use the building, if it's done at the end of lease term or otherwise? What's our obligation to the school district? And so I, I will, you know, look at the lease as well and kind of give some guidance on that.
Perfect. That's exactly what we need. Okay. Uh, Mr. Surios, anything on your end? Did we? Thank you for being here this evening. Did we miss anything? Anything we leave out?
No, I think you got it down and Eileen can shoot me any question she wants. Uh, I commend you on doing this work. It's hard work, public money, figuring out what to do. How best to do it. So nice to meet all of you. Thank you.
Thank you for your input tonight. Appreciate it. Okay, if there's nothing else on this topic, I will adjourn our work session. All right, our work session is adjourned. Thank you, Kami. Thank you all for being here this evening.